...zoning board of appeals meeting. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of March 25, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 25, 2014 minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 25, 2014 meeting.
Anybody second?
Second.
All right, Mike seconds. Any discussion on the minutes?
Minutes is the 27th or the 25th?
This is the March 25 we're discussing now?
I wasn't present for that meeting, so I don't vote, right?
You were not present, so you don't vote. That's correct. All right, having no discussion, all in favor? All right, so that's five to nothing approved. Next order of business is to approve the May 27, 2014 zoning board of appeals meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve that set of minutes?
I have a minor amendment.
Okay.
To page six, line 20. After equipment sheds, adding, as is essential to falling within the definition of alternative tower structure and accessory use.
He's adding.
As is essential to falling within the definition of alternative, capital A, tower, capital T, structure, capital S, and accessory use.
Okay, so that's on page six, line 20, and that language would be inserted after the word sheds?
And before the word were. Yep.
Okay. With that small revision, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second, anybody? Okay, we have a second from Aaron. And any discussion on the minutes?
Josh, I'll forego voting since I was not present at that meeting.
That's correct. That's correct. All right, so all in favor of approving the May 27, 2014 board minutes? That is five to nothing approved. All right, moving on to old business, the next agenda item is to hear the request of Mark Toothacre to reapprove the variance at Two Wheeler Road, map U-16, lot one. This variance was unanimously approved at the December 11, 2013 meeting, but it was not recorded at the registry of deeds with the 90 minutes as required by the zoning ordinance. Mr. Toothacre? Is not here. Why don't we table that for now? Go ahead.
He may not be coming.
Okay.
Can we deal with it?
Sure. Do we know he's not coming?
I don't know that.
Okay, well.
We could table it and put it.
Clearly, he's incredibly confident it's going to go well.
Should we move it to the end of the agenda?
Why don't we just push it to the end in case he does show up? I'd hate to do the item without him here. If he's going to show up, if he doesn't show up, we'll just do it. It'll be pretty quick. All right, moving on now to the new business. First item in the new business is to hear the request of Elizabeth M. Noft and Mary Ahern for a variance to add a front porch to their house at Eight Elmwood Road, map U-03, lot 21.
My name is Jeff Herbert, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicants, Elizabeth Noft and Marie Ahern, in connection with their application for a variance to construct a front porch on their property located at Eight Elmwood Road. In addition to the application for the variance, you should have a number of plans, sketches, drawings, and photos, and the materials that depict the current condition of the applicant's property, depict the proposed porch that the applicants would like to construct, as well as some of the abutting properties in the neighborhood. And all of these materials are submitted in support of the variance application. As I mentioned, the applicant's property is located at Eight Elmwood Road, and it currently exists precast concrete steps leading up to the front door and a small four-foot roof that covers the base of the steps. What the applicants would like to do is remove the small eight-foot roof that overhangs the steps and remove the precast concrete steps and construct a new front porch that would extend eight feet from the edge of the house towards the road and lengthwise extend roughly 21 feet along the length of the property. Because the actual proposed porch, I think, is depicted on P-1 and P-2 in the materials in their current state of the property, is depicted on E-1 and E-4. Because the current zoning ordinance provides for a 20-foot front yard setback, the construction of the porch would extend eight feet from the house, thereby leaving 15 feet 6 inches from the edge of the porch to the road. So a variance is required to allow the applicants to construct the porch that they desire. I'll just briefly go through each of the elements of the variance, talk about the application, why we think it meets all of those elements and why it should be granted. And again, I'll refer to some of those plans that we've submitted throughout my brief presentation. Just a little background, this property, it's believed to have been constructed roughly in 1929, and the applicants were told that the property at one point actually had a porch, which is similar to the porch that they want to reconstruct. Despite their good faith efforts to try to find a historical photo that depicted this porch as it at one time existed, they were unsuccessful. But in the course of the remodeling of their property, when they removed the front siding of the property, and you can see, I believe it's on photo E-1, what you can clearly see is the outline of the porch that at one time existed on the property. You can see the framing. And the dimensions of that porch that at one time existed match precisely to the porch that they want to construct. So I think that's an important piece of this variance application. Really, what they want to do is they want to refurbish or reconstruct something that was already there, as opposed to something brand-new. And I think that's an important piece of their application. In terms of at least the first element, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general neighborhood. Because of the configuration of the lot, there really is no other alternative to reconstruct or restore that porch that originally existed without the granting of a variance. There's just dimensionally, you can't do it. What happened here is the zoning ordinance changed. So at one time, this porch was there. For some reason or another, perhaps it fell into a state of disrepair, and the prior owners financially couldn't reconstruct it as it existed, and they did something on a much smaller scale. The zoning ordinance changed, and now the applicants really are prohibited from restoring an essential element and feature of the property that at one time existed without the granting of the variance. So I think that's an important piece of their application. Just next, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detrimentally affect the fair market value of the property. We feel that the application strongly meets this element. Again, what they want to do is certainly not change the character of the neighborhood here. Quite the contrary, they want to preserve the character of the neighborhood because what they want to do is restore an essential element of this property that was at one time there and also keep in harmony with their abutting properties. Their property immediately to the east and immediately to the west have eight-foot porches that extend from their property. Each of the properties to the east and the west, from the edge of the house to the road, is 23 feet 6 inches, and then from the edge of the porch to the road is 15 feet 6 inches. That matches precisely with the dimensional features of the porch that they want to construct. So really, they just want to preserve what at one time was on their property and preserve the character of the neighboring properties in the neighborhood. So they certainly don't want to change the essential features, characteristics of this neighborhood, but they want to preserve it. In addition to the materials, the plans, there's also a number of letters written by neighbors of the applicants strongly supporting the application in favor of the construction of this porch. And that's just further evidence that certainly the granting of this application won't adversely affect the fair market value of the property. But, you know, as the neighbors think it will preserve it and increase it by maintaining consistency and harmony amongst the porches that are presently there in the neighborhood. Just continuing on, the practical difficulty here is not the result of, certainly not the result of actions that the applicants have taken. Again, it's just the unique circumstance of having the zoning ordinance change. And again, the only way to allow the construction of this porch and to get the best economic return on their property, if they ever want to sell it, is by the granting of a variance that will allow them to restore this porch that at one time existed on the property. There is no other feasible alternative for this. Again, because of the unique configuration of the lot, the only way to construct this porch is through the granting of a variance. And we certainly don't know of any unreasonably adverse, granting that variance will create an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment. We're not aware that this lot is in any environmentally sensitive areas. Certainly, any construction will adhere to proper drainage or sedimentation control, and the construction and design of this porch will, you know, be consistent with the international building codes and consistent, you know, certainly won't have any adverse impact on the natural environment of the lot. So we think the application strongly meets the variance requirements. That's all I had. I did want to clarify one thing on the application. I was given the dimensions in terms of the eight-foot porch, and the edge of the porch to the road would be 15 feet 6 inches. What I wasn't given is what would be the distance from the end of the stairs leading off the porch to the road. So I crudely tried to measure it myself and came up with nine feet 1 inch, but Ben pointed out that certainly no variance can be granted for less than 10 feet. So that certainly will be changed. And there's a number of things that the applicants and their contractors can do construction-wise just to preserve, to make sure that the variance is not for less than 10 feet. It would be 10 feet from the edge of the stairs to the road. So that's all I had. If there's any questions for me, and certainly the applicants here are here as well, I'd be happy to take them.
And the variance, the 10-foot limit goes to the stairs, not to the edge of the structure? The stairs count as part of the structure?
That's correct.
Aside from the apparent framing that was sort of discovered when the siding came off, and certainly the design of the neighboring houses that have what appear to be a similar porch to that proposed, are there any perhaps photos of the original porch or plans of that?
I can just briefly speak to that. I don't believe there is, but I'll let the applicants, because they did, they actually tried to work with the librarians who thought there may be some historical photos, but...
Can you stand up at the podium so we can get you on the microphone? Thank you.
That's enough. No, is the answer. But what we did was check with the historical society, and there are several websites that record properties dating back to the 1950s and went back as far as that. They're all aerial shots, and it's difficult to discern whether there's a porch or not. To our eyes, it looked like there was, but, you know, we're biased. But we asked neighbors for actual photos of the property with the porch, and it was taken down so long ago, it was taken down probably 40 years ago. So, no. No photos.
Are you aware of when the ordinance changed, at that point at which, you mentioned the ordinance changed, and that's what precludes a porch today, but obviously didn't previously? Do you know the date of that change?
That it went to a 20-foot setback? No, I'm not sure the date of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just one question. In the packet, we had this one sheet. It doesn't look like it was stapled. Is this familiar with you? Is this something that was part of the application itself? It lists the addresses, and it has a breakdown in feet between the sidewalk, the stairs, sidewalk, the porch, sidewalk, the house.
Yep.
Could you describe who did that? Talk to this...
The applicants actually put that together.
Thank you.
Any other...
Sorry, no further questions?
I just want to say, it's probably one of the most complete applications I've ever seen come before this board. So, thank you. It makes our job a lot easier.
I especially like the photo of the front.
Any comment from the public? I know we received a number of letters that were attached to the applicant's application in support of the granting of the variance. Any further comment from the public? Okay. We can open it up now to board discussion, if there is any.
I'll make one comment. Is that in the application, residents at number 10, number 8, number 7, number 9, Elmwood, have submitted letters in support. Nobody else has opined one way or the other since notice was given. It's just those four?
I think there were a couple that...
I thought I saw one for two.
There may have been one that came separate.
The Briggs, I think, on Mountain View that came in.
So the other letters that were submitted?
Also in support.
Also in support. Three Mountain View Road and one Maplewood Road, all in support.
Any other comments or discussion from the board? Somebody like to make a motion?
I've got one.
Okay.
Sort of point, or perhaps a point of discussion. Certainly, I agree with the applicant's arguments to sort of the conditions that need to be met to grant the variance. My question is related to, I think it's, so I'm in section 1952B, and then on page 49 of my ordinance anyways. Notwithstanding the definition of dimensional standards, no variance shall be granted. And then there's conditions A, B, and C. And C is to other reduce a setback to less than 10 feet or the shortest non-conforming setback distance created by the existing building. I think clearly the applicant has said that they'll meet that 10 feet, but the shortest non-conforming setback created by the existing building is, today is what, Ben?
I believe the building today is conforming. And the way I read that is, you know, if the building was seven feet from a property line, you could go below the 10, and you could come down to seven. But if there's no shorter setback, the board is limited to 10?
Sure. Okay.
Do you think it's a conforming lot or not?
It's a non-conforming lot, but I believe the structure is conforming.
Are those existing stairs?
Yeah, actually, actually, the existing stairs would extend into the front setback and make it non-conforming. That's correct.
Yep, sorry about that.
Since my understanding that the other homes on the street, the ones with the porches, would also be classified as non-conforming right now?
That's correct.
Okay.
More so.
More so.
Ben, you were just saying that you read that as either 10 or less than what's already non-conform, like, okay.
Yeah, you're limited to going down to 10 unless...
Unless already beyond 10.
Unless there's a case where you already have a portion of the house that's less than 10. Then that brings, gives you more authority to go below 10, but only in that case.
So if they're staying at, they've said that the stairs will be 10, they'll meet that 10-foot, then?
Correct.
And I'm satisfied with that?
Yeah, the front of the stairs will be 10 feet from the front property line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance request to build a proposed porch that is 15'6" from the property line, and the stairs from the porch are 10 feet from the front of the property line.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the pending motion? All in favor of the motion? So that is seven, nothing, approved. I'm going to go read the findings of fact and additional findings of fact. Findings of fact, one, this is a variance request for map U-3, lot 21, Eight Elmwood Road, applicant Elizabeth M. Noft and Mary Ahern. Two, Elizabeth M. Noft and Mary Ahern, the owners, are the owners of record of the subject property. Three, Eight Elmwood Road is a non-conforming lot in the RC District. The required setbacks are 20 feet from the front property line, 10 feet from the side, and 15 feet from the rear property line. Four, the proposed porch is 15 feet 6 inches from the front property line, and the stairs from the porch are 10 feet from the front property line. Side and rear setbacks are compliant. Additional findings of fact, the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. Two, the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of abutting properties. Three, the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. Four, no other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner. Five, the granting of a variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment. And six, the property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline areas as described in Title 38, Section 435. And conclusion, there is no substantial departure from the intent of the ordinance, and a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause a practical difficulty as defined by 30 AM RSA, Section 4353, 4C. So all in favor of those findings and conclusion? All right, seven, nothing. Thank you. All right, the next order of business is to hear the request of Philip E. Burke of 220 Fowler Road, map U-44, lot 6.
Just the chair. Right next to you. I'm going to need to recuse myself from this particular application, and Mr. Burke's an employee at the Purpuda Club, and I'm the president of the Purpuda Club, so I feel there's a conflict of me sitting here opining one way or the other, so.
Okay.
Don, wouldn't you rather be golfing anyway? Jeez.
All right, so we will be hearing number two, to hear the request of Philip E. Burke of 220 Fowler Road, map U-44, lot 6, for a request for a variance to add an 80-square-foot shed to his property. A variance is necessary to place the shed 23.5 feet from the property line, 21 feet from the side property line, from the front, sorry. A variance is necessary to place the shed 23.5 feet from the front property line, 21 feet from the side property line, and 75 feet from the wetland associated with Great Pond. Mr. Burke?
Up until now, I always had a place to store my landscaping equipment, but my parents have vacated the old post office, and we'll be selling the property, so I need a shed.
Do you want to walk us through your application and kind of provide us a little bit of background regarding your property and requests for the shed?
I've lived there since 1997, and what I was going to do is just maybe, I'm not even sure yet, I'm going to do this, take Dad's shed from his property and bring it out and plank it right in front of my driveway and work it right there next to the house. I think what Ben was telling me is that if I got rid of some of the impervious things that are on the property would help, and I got rid of one of the patios, and I'm certainly willing to get rid of another one, but I wanted to wait to see if I would get approved before I ripped up the other patio. It's flagstone. More than likely, I'm going to buy a new shed and have it brought over rather than bring Dad's over and go with an eight-by-10. His is actually a nine and a half by nine and a half. So I just don't think it's worth it to pay someone to drag that. It's pretty old. It's an old shed, but it's fairly solid. Out here, I want it to be just almost the same, to just go get a new one.
Is there any place on the property where the shed could be placed that is, would not require a variance from the shoreline overlay zone, the 100-foot setback from that wetland?
I'm not really sure. You mean go closer to the road?
Even then?
Is there a minimum? I mean, as it was, by putting it where I want to put it, it's right in line where the house is. It's no, it wouldn't be any closer to the road than the, closer to the road than the house actually is. So...
And that's depicted in the sketch that you provided?
The sketch I gave you is where I'd like to put it. And there's a, I didn't show you the patio that's between the proposed shed and the house, but it's, that patio is actually eight by 12, and it's really, it was more for decoration than, it's a walkway, but it's not, there's a lot of it that's, it's not used as a walkway. It's just kind of a neat-looking thing. But that can go, and then just turn that whole area into grass.
Is the wetland along that whole back property line or just on the right-hand side?
It's all, the whole back... It's all, the whole back, it's, faces south to Great Pond.
Were there any letters either way on this one?
No, there weren't. I, I did have a conversation with a representative from the DEP that just called to, because I sent a notice to them, so they called and had a few questions about the application, and said they weren't gonna go on record either way. I, I could also add that Mr. Burke did ask me to visit the property to see if there were any other alternatives, and I did go out there with a tape measure, and, and he's, it's a very small lot. You can see from the site plan that even if he pushed the shed right against the road, it still wouldn't meet the 100-foot wetland setback. And it's a, it's a very, very small lot for the RA zone, pretty rare to see a lot that size in the RA zone. And the wetland, the wetland does, the, the wetland does carry the whole length, it pretty much goes parallel to the rear of those lots all the way along there.
Question, are you planning on placing anything underneath the shed?
I would go with whatever the professionals think I should do, not a slab, but I don't want to get into that, but just either cinder blocks or the pressure-treated, whatever they deem, but I didn't want to get into making a slab.
So it won't be increasing the impervious surface? It'll be, the, the shed will be up?
Up, yes.
And there'll be stone underneath it or something to allow?
Correct, yes, yeah.
And the, the impervious surface, he, he's gonna do a swap for the impervious surface. He's gonna pull up, there, there's a few existing patios, and so it's, it's, it's gonna be an even exchange for the, for the 80-square-feet that he's adding. 80-square-feet will be removed elsewhere.
Okay, so it is, it'll be swapped?
Yes.
Could you, just, just to clarify, and just so, if, when we get to findings of fact, what size shed are you proposing?
8 by 10.
8 by 10?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's whether or not it's, it's the existing shed you're gonna move or whether you go buy a new one? They'll both be?
Well, I can't, if I tell you 8 by 10, then I won't be taking Dad's, that's a 9 and 1/2 by, almost, it's 9 and 1/2 by 10, actually. It's closer to 10 than it is 9 and 1/2 by 9 and 1/2, and so I, that's kind of the way I'm playing it now, is I just would rather have a new shed brought over and a groovier roofline. Anyway, I kind of like, I'm not so sure I like the roofline on this.
Okay, thanks.
I, I encourage the applicant to go to 80-square-feet because there is the exemption in the ordinance that allows the 80-square-foot shed to go from a 250-foot setback to a 100-foot setback. I thought it may be more palatable for the board if he went with a 9 and 1/2 by 10 and 1/2 shed. The, the setback reduction would be 175 feet versus 25 feet for 80-square-feet.
And the, the other properties in your neighborhood are generally larger?
The one right next to me is exactly the same, I should say to the west of me, and then to the east of me, of course, that's Gallagher's, and he's got, he bought the Carver lot, so he's, he's gotta be 300 feet frontage and 8, 100 back, so he's, you know, he's got a huge, the gigantic, what do you call it, Great Pond?
Yep.
House, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Like to open it up now for board discussion?
Public comment?
Oh, thank you. Like to open it up now for a public comment? All right, so having no public comment, board discussion? Did you?
All right, I'm sure why not, why not put a shed on there, right? How do you do it? How?
Well, I mean, we have to go through the undue hardship factors. The landing question cannot yield a reasonable rate of return.
Sorry.
I mean, do you want to get into the?
What provision are you on? Are you on page 49?
Yeah.
It's section 2, though.
Yeah, shoreline, under the shoreline performance overlay.
Yep. So how do you define undue hardship?
It's, the factors right here.
Yep. Thank you. That's not, that's not my query. If we can go through, I'm just, I'm troubled how we get through the process and say yes, green light, which question?
I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying. Is there a general sense, I mean, I, is, I mean, is, is there an argument that it cannot yield a reasonable rate of return unless you can put a shed, if you can't store any of the usual items that you would want to store in a shed or a garage? I mean, but a reasonable rate of return, you can still sell the property?
We had an earlier applicant last year that was looking for a garage over in the Oakhurst neighborhood. The question was that they had a larger family, and they bought the house, and they didn't have a garage, so they were trying to justify the variance for the garage. We were debating whether you buy a house and you're entitled to a garage. The answer was, I think, no. It is what it is when you buy it. Does he need coverage to put stuff in the shed? Okay, where do you put the shed? And, I am troubled, how do we process through the questions by saying yes, it meets each of these, without actually twisting ourselves to get through the process?
I don't, I don't necessarily disagree, at least where I'm at now, I'm struggling with just fitting the request in with the language of the ordinance.
Yeah, and I also see this provision as a restrictive basis upon which a variance is requested and given. Not really, I guess it would be E, notwithstanding definition at the bottom. It's not listed as E, but it's in that list category.
Right.
So on the bottom 49, there is a requirement that's not enumerated. I'm referring to it as E, but it's fairly strong language. Conceptually, I have no problem with the shed there. Why not? I would like to have a shed on my piece of property, too.
Anybody have some general pushback to what Matt has said? I am, I'm certainly open to be convinced by a good argument that it fits in with the ordinance, but I, I, I don't have one myself, and...
If the shed is temporary, in the sense that it's just sitting on the dirt?
Or blocks.
Or, or blocks, can it be in a setback?
No.
Then the answer is no. It cannot be in a setback if it's temporary and, and it's not affixed to the land, it just sits there. Still a structure.
Basically, if he purchased a canopy from LL Bean, a 10, an 8 by 10 canopy, set it up and stored his equipment under it, that would fit, that would work, even though it's still increasing the impervious surface.
Well, yeah, I mean, and he said that to me informally, is, you know, the, the alternative here is a, a blue tarp over my lawn mower and snow blower, and so, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's the, the alternative is the stuff sitting there with a blue tarp over it, unfortunately, which is not, blue tarps are not structures, certainly not in Maine.
So one, a little more expensive option is that he buys a trailer, leaves the wheels on it, you know, what the landscaping guys have, just parks it there, and that is a temporary garage?
There's children watching. It's, yes, if, if a trailer is registered, it is not a structure, if that's what you're getting at.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Any other discussion?
Unfortunately, the standards that apply to the, to us, to giving a variance of a setback for the shoreline zone are undue hardship, which is a much higher standard than the practical difficulty standard that applies if we just want to do a variance of a regular dimensional standard, and so it makes it much more difficult for us to give the variance of that 100-foot setback from the Great Pond wetland that's on the back of your property, because that standard is so much more difficult. It would, you would have to be able to establish that you couldn't get any reasonable return from your property at all, that your property is unique, it's different from all of the other properties in your neighborhood, such that you have a need to get reasonable return from your property that is associated with the variance, and that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I think that one is probably pretty consistent as well, that you also have not self-created the hardship, which is also probably the case, but the reasonable return piece in conjunction with the kind of distinguishing your property from all of the other properties in the neighborhood is what's really hard about that standard.
I'd love to grant the variance to a degree. I mean, the language is, is pretty clear, pretty plain, speaks for itself, as much as I don't like the idea of a blue tarp shed. I don't know what options we really have. I'm from Oxford County, I've seen plenty of blue tarp sheds in my day, don't put me wrong.
Yeah, unfortunately, we, we don't, we're not given a lot of discretion in this section of the ordinance. It's, it's pretty much ties the board's hands with respect to, you know, when and when we can and when we cannot grant a variance for this sort of request. So do we have a motion?
I move to deny the request for variance.
I'll second.
And any discussion on the, any motion? All right, all in favor? So that's six, nothing, to deny the request of Philip E. Burke of 220 Fowler Road, map U44, lot 6, for a request for a variance to add an 80-square-foot shed to his property. I guess I'm just gonna go ahead and read the initial findings of fact, which are, one, variance request for map U44, lot 6, 220 Fowler Road, applicant Philip E. Burke. Two, Philip E. Burke is the owner of record of map U44, lot 6, 220 Fowler Road. Subject lot is a non-conforming lot, is in the RA District. The lot is also in the Resource Protection, One Critical Wetlands District, the Shoreland Performance Overlay District, and the Great Pond Watershed Overlay District. Four, the required property line setbacks in the RA Zone for an 80-square-foot shed are 25 feet front, 10 feet side, and 5 feet rear. Five, the required setback in the Shoreland Performance Overlay District for an 80-square-foot shed is 100 feet from the RP 1 CW wetland and 250 feet from the normal high-water line of Great Pond. Six, the required setback in the Resource Protection Zone for an 80-square-foot shed is 100 feet from the RP 1 CW wetland. Seven, the applicant, application is compliant with the Great Pond Watershed Overlay District regulations. Eight, the applicant is seeking a var, the applicant sought a variance to the front RA Zone setback in order to place the shed 23.5 feet from the front property line. And nine, the applicant sought a variance to be 75 feet from the RP 1 wetland associated with Great Pond where the zoning ordinance requires an 100-foot setback. And all in favor of those findings of fact? Six, nothing. Thank you, Mr. Burke, and...
Do you want to do an additional finding?
I mean, those would have, yeah, strike, I mean, those would have been approved, right? Yeah. All right, moving on to item number three, is to hear the request for reconsideration of Verizon Wireless for an administrative appeal that was denied by the zoning board on May 27, 2014. The subject property is 11 Avon Road, map U12, lot 12. Before we get started, a couple of things. I know there were several board members who were not here for the original, both John and Mike, for the original request or appeal. Do they sit for this?
I believe that we would not participate in the actual decision as to whether to reconsider, but if the reconsideration were reopened, and I believe it's deniable at that point, and we could participate, but, John, I'd be interested to get your input on that.
Well, as I'm fond of saying, as being one of the few non-attorneys sitting at this table.
That means you're right.
I would think, I actually think that does make sense, that reconsideration should be for those that were here last month, enjoying the party, and if it is reopened, then we'll, we'll weigh in at that point.
Okay, and then unless the board disagrees, I'd like to just focus the presentation at this point on whether or not to grant the reconsideration and not get into the substantive issues that were raised at the last meeting until the board decides whether or not to grant the reconsideration.
Is that a board discussion or is that a motion?
I, I will move.
No, I mean, I mean, is that something that we're discussing internally or something that we're taking a presentation and public comment on? that we're taking a presentation and public comment on? The reconsideration decision.
In terms of what?
I guess it's not clear to me that we need input from anyone other than the board on whether to reconsider or not.
So you're saying your inclination is we don't need any argument as to whether or not to reconsider?
I don't think so. I mean, it's a board decision, right? It's not.
I mean, it's a board decision, but so is everything.
But it's not, it's not a, it's not like we're deciding a, it's not like we would take public comment on that. It's not like we would.
No. No, I think you're correct, in my opinion.
I mean, to me, the minute we start taking comment, you're opening the door to going into the substance.
Well, no.
It's going to be very difficult to put that genie back in the bottle once we start it.
I agree with that. Would the board just like to not open this up for public comment or comment from, I guess Verizon, who's moving for reconsideration, just discuss this amongst ourselves?
I think we make a procedural, my personal opinion is that we make a procedural decision on whether we are or are not rehearing, and then we proceed from there.
I'm comfortable with that.
Because if we do, if we do reconsider, then that'll give the public an opportunity to comment and everybody to speak.
Yes. So I guess the issue now before the board is simply whether or not we will grant the request for reconsideration?
There's a letter from Verrill Dana dated June 5, which in the prefatory paragraph cites to 30A MRSA Section 2691-3F.
Yep.
Which is the statute. It does not cite, as far as I saw, any provisions of our ordinance regarding our ability to reconsider or opt not to reconsider. In the Brandon and Isaacson letter dated June 18, 2014, there, on page two, there is a citation to that same statute, and also to Section 1953E of our ordinance, which specifies that it is within our discretion whether we opt to reconsider or not.
Yep, the board may reconsider. That's the statute, right? And so you're referring to 1953E, which is cited in the Brandon and Isaacson? And I mean, the pertinent language there is the board may consider a new appeal or application within this one-year period if it determines that owing to a mistake of law or misunderstanding of fact an injustice was done, or that a change has taken place in some essential aspect of the case sufficient to warrant reconsideration.
And it does then specify that should we decide to, they don't call it reconsider, to renew, that it would be essentially de novo. We'd be starting over.
So, I mean, we're basically looking for a mistake of law or a misunderstanding of fact, or some change. So I'd like to focus the board discussion on that.
Chair, I would add a qualifier to that statement, that the mistake, mistake of fact or law results in an injustice. So it, what standard is that? It's, for me, it's a little higher than just a technical mistake.
The arguments that are presented in the Verrill Dana letter.
Attorney Anderson, I.
Yeah, I just, I just, I know that you're not hearing on the merits, but I think on the issue of what the standard is for you doing your own decision of whether to reconsider, I have a comment on the applicability of your ordinance, which I don't think applies. This is governed exclusively by the state standard, which does impact the standard that you folks are looking at in making this threshold determination. That hasn't been addressed.
This information is not in his letter.
It's not.
And we have not opened for public comment.
I appreciate that. But of course, Brandon Isaacson comment came, we have not submitted anything on this kind of jurisdictional issue of what ordinance. You can tell me not to speak, but I disagree with the legal standard and would like an opportunity to comment on what I think that standard is for you making this preliminary determination without any comment on the substance of the project or any of the standards. But I appreciate it's entirely up to you.
I think we'll just continue the board discussion, and we'll invite comment if we decide to.
With regard to the statute, I'm not seeing anything that specifies any standards for, it simply says that we may reconsider. It is completely discretionary. It specifies no standard.
Right.
To the extent we look to, beyond that, to our ordinance, to whether there are or are not mistakes of fact or law, does not seem inconsistent with this determining what
Mr. Chairman, the point of a mistake of law that's referenced in our ordinance, you, the attorneys can feel free to correct me on this, but I believe Mr. Anderson is making the argument that perhaps we made a mistake of law in finding on the concealment issue. Do you see that similarly? And I'm not, I'm not sure he's correct in that. I think there's a counterargument to it, but.
Yeah, I mean, what, I think the argument from the submission was that the issue of concealment wasn't properly before the board. And it wasn't an issue that Ben had based his denial of the permit on. And it really is an issue that comes up later in front of planning board if it gets to that point. And therefore, that should not have been one of the reasons for our denial of the appeal.
And I think the Brandon Isaacson letter offers a counterargument to that.
Yes.
Because when I, you know, when I look at these, when I look at the, the standards that, that are in Section 1953E, there's the mistake of law, misunderstanding of fact, which, in my opinion, I don't think we misunderstood any of the facts. And I'm not sure an injustice was done either. So, at least from my perspective.
And I think the injustice was done is, that that sort of qualifies, it's a mistake of law or misunderstanding, owing to a mistake of law or misunderstanding of fact, an injustice was done.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, you first find that there was a mistake of law or misunderstanding, and then find that there was an injustice. So it's kind of this two-step, you know, as Matt kind of mentioned, this heightened standard. Any other board comments, discussion?
I don't think that there are any new, that this new submission on June 5 from Verrill Dana evidences any mistakes of law or fact in our previous decision. It does raise new twists on arguments that were already made based on existing facts that were already in there. But I don't think that that, that new twists on arguments constitute evidence of a prior mistake of law on our part.
Any further discussion, comment? You know, I guess before we move forward, Attorney Anderson's been standing there. Is it, is that a decision of the board not to take any comment, any presentation from either Attorney Anderson or anybody opposing Verizon with respect to the motion that's pending, just to reconsider?
I certainly wouldn't object to hearing from, I mean, I mean, just, I think it might be a courtesy to hear from people who came to speak, but.
I mean, I, I go back, I don't, I am loath to reopen this and have an hour of discussion that will start to bleed over into substantive issues.
My concern is that this record will also get, we should bear in mind what happens to this record and what it does to our existing record, and we should be, use caution in taking the lid out of that bottle.
The only comment that I would have is that I, too, would give a courtesy to give a time allotted for people who wish to speak, so, however long. But I do take the point that it's important that the record stays as fairly organized as possible, and we don't have a procedural problem amongst the board and how we actually do our business. So I'm more likely to say that there's no further discussion if the board chooses to limit the discussion just amongst ourselves, and the parties and the public do not have an opportunity to speak yet.
I mean, we've received submissions. I mean, we've received argument that has been submitted to the board on the issue of reconsideration. And again, it's in the board's discretion. I mean, I'm comfortable limiting it to the discussion that we're having. But, but if somebody wants to make a motion to allow discussion.
I'll make a motion to allow discussion from the applicant as well as from the public.
As a point of order, open-ended, or do you have a fixed amount of time that you're thinking of?
Yeah, perhaps limiting the length of the comments could, could serve to sort of limit discussion to arguments for reconsideration as opposed to rehearing facts, if that's the case.
So I would perhaps limit it to, I would think neither of these letters are too lengthy, I can think, I would think either party could go through it in five minutes.
So five minutes per party and five minutes total for the public.
Sure, that sounds reasonable to me. Are you seconding?
As a point of order, I'm just clarifying.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion? Somebody else like to make a motion? Is there any further board discussion? Don't all speak at once. And is there, is there any more discussion that we want to have on the motion for reconsideration? Or would somebody like to move to deny the motion for reconsideration or the request for reconsideration?
Chair, I have a question. Let's join who you'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
On the issue of discussion, maybe it's important for us to hear, hear people speak. Is that what it, make us up, assist us with making the decision as to whether we reopen and have further reconsideration?
So would you like to make a?
So the question is, do, if we open up the discussion, to be persuaded to step further, or do we just sit right now? We've had a, we've had a discussion, let's move on. And it doesn't sound like from our discussion, it seems that none of the papers have persuaded us that there is a mistake of law or a mistake of fact that leads to an injustice. So we don't even meet the standard that's set out in that provision.
I would agree.
So if we're, our discretion is a little more solid, and we don't need to have further discussion from the parties of the public.
Right, I mean, I look at the main statute, which says the board may reconsider, and it doesn't really give any more further guidance, any guidance beyond we may consider within certain time limitations. And then the zoning ordinance, the capabilities of the zoning ordinance, says within one year, shall not be considered by the board until one year's elapsed. The board may consider a new appeal or application within the one-year period if it determines that owing a mistake of law or misunderstanding of law an injustice was done, or there's a change, or that a change has taken place in some essential aspect of the case sufficient to warrant reconsideration. Based on the submissions, based on sitting here last month, I, it is my view that the board has not made, has not made a mistake of law or has misunderstood any fact. Scratch that. It is my view that, based on the submissions and based on the board meeting last month, that owing to a mistake of law or misunderstanding of fact by the board an injustice has been done. I mean, that's, it's, to me, it's, it's pretty much that clear.
I'm going to go ahead and move to deny Verizon's request for reconsideration of the May 27, 2014 zoning board decision to uphold the CEO's denial of building permit request to add a wireless telecommunications antenna and associated equipment building to the property at 11 Avon Road.
Mr. Chair, you could allow thirty seconds of comment on only the issue of what the standard this board is applying in determining whether or not even to reconsider and go to a de novo review on the merits, and not take any comment on the substance because we think you've got the wrong standard and you're about to make this threshold decision based on the wrong standard. You may end up coming out the same place, but that would be one option. It takes about twenty seconds to make the point.
We're using the standard that you cited in your letter.
Yes, except the renewed proceeding standard. Yes, except the renewed proceeding standard doesn't apply to motions for reconsideration before this board. That is for a refiling of an appeal or request for a variance within the one-year period. The state statute governs zoning boards of appeals and overrides any inconsistent provision. So you do have this "may," which, as the chair has pointed out, has no guidelines whatsoever, but you don't need to find an injustice in order to reconsider under the state statute. And it is the state statute and not the municipal ordinance that governs that threshold determination.
Hold on there, I think we've heard the 30 seconds.
That was my 30 seconds.
Now, having heard that, I do want to open it up to at least the attorney from Brandon Isaacson, if he's here.
I'm Brad Hoffman and Mr. Nuzzi from Brandon Isaacson represents me. Unfortunately, he had conflicting obligations.
Do you mind just coming up to the podium? Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, can we table Joanna's motion currently?
Do we have to move to table?
It's still standing.
We haven't had any motion to open it for comment either.
I know, all right.
All I will say is that you have the submission from Mr. Nuzzi. Unfortunately, he had a conflicting obligation this evening and is not here. And so I, I would ask that, well, you've consulted...
We have his submission, okay. Joanna, do you want to, I guess your motion's still pending, which was to deny the motion, the request for a reconsideration. Somebody like to second that?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, so, one, two, three. So that's the request for reconsideration by, the request for reconsideration of the May 27, 2014 zoning board decision to uphold the CEO's denial of a building permit requesting to address, sorry, requesting to add wireless telecommunications antennas and associated equipment building to the property 11 Avon Road, map U-12, lot 12, is denied. It was five, no.
Is denied in accordance with 30A MRSA Section 2691-3F.
We would ask the board to make a determination about whether this decision was also a vote under your municipal ordinance and to make that clear. If you've concluded it's just under the state statute, that's fine, but from the discussion I heard this evening, there's a lot of talk about injustice.
This is out of order.
Yeah.
This is out of order.
So that's my request.
I'd like to add what is denied pursuant to 30A MRSA, Section 2691-3F. That's added to the findings or denial. And the last order of business was the first order of all things is Mr. Toothaker here. Okay. So the last order of business is to hear the request of Mark Toothaker to reapprove the variance at Two Wheeler Road, map U-16, lot 1. This variance was unanimously approved on December 11, 2013, but it was not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days as required by the zoning ordinance. We do not have any comment from Mr. Toothaker. Any public comment? Just opened up the board discussion, I'd just like to quickly ask, Ben, have you spoken to him? Did you?
I did speak to him. He, he was planning on coming to the last meeting. We had to bump him off the agenda because we didn't have the right members coming from the last meeting that were at the December meeting because of the board turnover. I called him back and said he'd be the first item on the next month. I thought that he intended to be here, but it may have slipped his mind. So it's up to the four members of the board that were present at the December meeting who granted the variance to decide if a reapproval of the variance is warranted based on the circumstance that Mr. Toothaker forgot to record the variance within the required time period.
Which four of us is it? Which four of us is it, sorry?
It is you, Joanna, John, Josh, Matt.
Chair, question.
Sure.
What's the basis upon which, Ben just made the comment, that the discussion is limited to the four people that attended the first time that the grant, that variance was granted? How do we, what's that process? Where is that?
Well, that process came from me. To simplify the process, the other option to bring the other board members into it would be to rehear the whole variance with all the application materials, and I didn't think that would be the...
I mean, it would certainly seem to, to invite the other board members to be part of the discussion and the granting, the, you know, reapproval of the granting of the variance. We would need to, the other, the new board members would have to hear the application.
Yeah, and I think, I think the new board members could comment on, on this in theory about whether we can reapprove a variance like this, but I don't think they would feel comfortable voting substantively on the application. But certainly theoretically, you know, here we are, we have an expired variance, they, I don't, I don't think there's any problem with them commenting on the process, but I don't think they'd want to vote on the variance.
So are the choices either going ahead with reapproving it now or just tabling it till next time?
I think, sorry, I, I think we, I think we either vote on it now, or if the board isn't comfortable with this process and wants to see something else, then I can, I can make Mr. Toothaker aware of that, and if the whole application needs to come back, then that's what we'll do.
I mean, personally, we approved it in December. I mean, I would reapprove it. It would be nice to have him here just to explain why the 90 days passed without him, you know, allowing it to lapse because he didn't record it with the registry of deeds. But to me, I don't think my decision to reapprove would turn necessarily on his explanation. Maybe if we reapproved it and then 90 days later he was asking for another reapproval at some point, you know, it starts to take up time, board time, and, you know, we've already gone through it, but I don't have any real strong feelings against reapproving the issuance of the variance that we just approved last December.
I guess I kind of feel like there was some opposition to this one, and we went ahead and approved it, and now there's been no recording of it, there's been no action, so...
And he's not here.
And he's not here. And it just kind of says to me, like, this wasn't that necessary, which is kind of a fundamental premise of your decision to grant a variance, is its necessity and...
So...
Which is kind of why, I mean, I personally would prefer to table it as opposed to just reapproving it with no reason to do it.
Well, we, we did notice the butters, so...
Yeah, I see that notice.
So if anyone, if anyone was opposed to the reapproval, they did have that legal opportunity.
And we approved it. We approved it. Were the objections of the butters. The butters have been noticed that you're back here for reapproval. They could have come back and, I mean, just, just as Mr. Toothaker could have come back and argued in favor of the reapproval, they could have come here.
Was he scheduled for their last meeting?
It was scheduled for, he was here.
Because of the, if he was here, he showed up at that point. And was he here and we told him that we weren't going to get to him last time?
No, I think he was at the...
No, he wasn't here because I called him hours before the meeting and told him that we weren't going to hear it because I knew we weren't going to have, at that point, I knew we weren't going to have the right members, so I called him on the Tuesday afternoon before the meeting and told him not to come.
Okay, my mistake, I thought there was somebody who actually was on the agenda but was pushed off.
I think that was the first couple that we saw.
Right, right, understood.
I'll add my two cents on this. I don't think we should rubber stamp prior variances that were granted. The burden is on the applicant to show up and to participate. It's a possibility that the next time that Mr. Toothaker's here and this application's here, we decide no. Doesn't mean that it's a no or a yes, it's just that that's a possibility that we could consider theoretically. Yes, it would be more efficient if we do grant it this evening, but I take Joanna's point that it wasn't a clean application the last time. And a related point is that I'm not sure whether a part of the board can hold power to grant a variance outside of the other board members. That's just a technical aspect, so that if we're all sitting here, you either have to recuse or you have to vote or decide what you're going to do. So I'm interested in tabling the, the application and that due notice will be given and he'll be the first one. I don't, do not anticipate any issues with this application, that procedurally it's clean if we table it.
Is it expensive for us to renotice stuff?
Not terribly. I mean, well, it's, it's 25 letters and probably an hour of staff time and 25 mailings, so...
I don't know.
Can I just add that procedurally, I'm okay with, with the procedure that Ben has sort of put forward, that the members that heard this appeal previously vote on it and whether or not that's tonight or whether or not that's at the, at the next meeting, I think that's still up for discussion, but I am okay sort of not participating in, in sort of reapproval. And like Ben said, I wouldn't be comfortable without reviewing a full application. So I guess the next question is if it's tabled because Mr. Toothaker's not here, are we requiring him to come back and represent the entire application?
Is that, I mean, I guess we have several issues here. Are we tabling it because he's not here? Because, is there a requirement that he be here? I mean, obviously, if he's here, we can ask him questions and he can respond and we can say, why didn't you file this with the registry of deeds within 90 days? And he's going to explain why he didn't. That may or may not be, you know, an important fact as to whether or not we decide this, but it may not be. There's nobody here opposing it, it's been noticed.
I think Mr. Toothaker could also choose not to, not to comment at all, right? If he were here.
He could, right? He could be here and he could say, I stand on my, you know, what...
Previous application.
Yeah. I stand on my, my previous submission and the request for reapproval.
I stand on the record that was submitted in December.
Right.
Period.
Period. Which is, which is essentially what he has done by not being here.
Well, I guess from my perspective, I feel like there has been a little bit of confusion, it sounds like, with the last two meetings. He was on the agenda, he got kind of a last-minute call not to come. He was certainly clearly on the agenda tonight, and frankly, if I'm being asked to just vote on this with someone not even showing up, I'd be inclined to say, I'm sorry, you should have recorded it timely. But I'm, my personal preference would be to table it until next time and give him another chance in the event that there was confusion about what was happening with the meetings and then see what happens next time.
And Ben, did you talk to him before this meeting?
No, I haven't talked to him. It's been a couple of weeks since I've talked to him.
Is he a permanent resident?
I believe so.
I mean, I, I don't love the idea of tabling it, but I certainly wouldn't want to deny it. I would prefer tabling it, as, as you've suggested, over denying it.
So if it's tabled, is the December package being resubmitted for approval by the entire board? I guess that's Mike. Seemingly that's run, that's run.
So that, there's two options there. One is that we have a quorum of the people that originally passed it, which they would be up to have four. And the remaining board members who are present at the next meeting have two options. Either they recuse themselves, so it's just the quorum of the four, or if they wish to vote, then they have to hear whatever necessary information is necessary for them to vote.
I mean, this isn't necessarily dissimilar from the reconsideration. I think Mike and I weren't here for that last meeting and, you know, we're really not, we don't have standing to kind of weigh in on reconsideration, we weren't here.
Because we were determining whether or not to reconsider. I mean, you weren't, you did not have any information.
Right.
You could not make a determination.
So, I mean, if, I mean, if we're, it seems as though the four of us that were here were really going to approve it tonight, you know, based upon our understanding of the record back in December and rereading the minutes, which is what I did, you know. And, and if we're not going to do that, then I, then I guess, you know, wait a minute, this is the third time, this will have been then the third time it's come before the ZBA and to, not necessarily to his, you know, any fault of his own necessarily, okay, but it's the third time before the board, we've got three new board members, and at some point it's like, hey, they're, they're on the board, you know, and in fairness to them, to everyone on the board, they should, they should hear this too. And oh, by the way, it would have been six months since we heard it. So I guess my feeling is that if the four of us want to, are comfortable voting on it, then we should do that. If we're not, for a variety of reasons, then let's table it and, and have them come back on the agenda next month.
For the whole board.
For whoever's here. He res submits the application, he can resubmit the application, and that's, and it's submitted to the board for full consideration in June or July, I guess.
Can we do that?
Well, I mean, to reapprove.
I mean, under the section that we were just looking at for reconsideration, are we allowed to essentially take it as a new application when it's...
After a decision has been made by the board, a new appeal or application of similar import shall not be considered by the board until one year has elapsed following the date of such decision. I'm sure that was probably intended to be referred to in denial.
Right.
How does, how does that approve just a reapproval?
I know, it's, the problem is, it's not called reconsideration, though, it's actually called renewal, which this kind of is because he didn't record it.
See, if the applicant was here, he could withdraw the application, so there's no determination.
I don't think he could, because we voted on it.
It's already been approved.
Yeah, a decision has been made.
I mean, he can't undo the fact that we approved it.
Yeah, we should just vote on it tonight.
I mean, we've made a decision. You know, it's, it's the fact that he didn't file the thing and, you know, he's...
Are, there are no provisions for like an extension or anything like that?
There's nothing in that, I mean, I haven't looked carefully, there's nothing in the ordinance for this type of situation.
No.
So basically, sounds like we can make him come back in a new application, but we don't have to.
Well, we can't, wait, but if, can we?
No, he cannot come back, sorry.
He can't? It's a wait a year.
That's right.
Okay. Well, we can make him come back after a year, but...
Well, I mean, we can, we can deny...
That would be effectively denying his...
Right. I mean, he can't come back and just resubmit the old application, we've already ruled on that in the past year. So if, if we table it... So if we table it, we can really only table it just to hear the discrete issue of the renewal of the granting of the variance.
Am I the only one of the four of us here that's having any kind of hesitation at all about re-upping this?
I'm hesitating. And also, I think that we are precluded now that, really think about it. Same provision that John just mentioned is that the decision by us has been made. That's it. He can come back before us if there's a mistake of law or fact. Those two things have not happened. So how do we have jurisdiction to either, because we didn't table the application in the first instance. It has expired. And he had to go to the courthouse and file the variance, and that has not happened. So what is in front of us? In that light means that he's precluded from seeking a variance for a year.
I mean, actually, looking at his, the notice here, to hear the request of Martha Toothaker to reapprove the variance.
Reapproved.
To reapprove.
To approve again.
Now, what if he's reapproving, then where's the application?
And we can't do that anyway.
Why can't you do that?
I'm just looking at the statute. It says that if it's not recorded, the variance is void.
So it has to be reapproved. We have to apply.
It has expired.
Well, yeah, you know, the variance has expired. Under renewed proceedings, it talks about after a decision has been made, a new appeal or application. I mean, you could read that, that this isn't a new or different application. I'm not sure that goes with it, but that's up to you guys.
Let's get, sorry, my brother, after you, sir.
Sounds like the intent of the.
Says it's void. The variance is void if it's not recorded in 90 days.
I haven't resubmitted.
Okay. No, it sounds like the intent is if, to preclude people from just, oh, I was denied. Let me just apply the next month and keep on doing it. And this is in that situation, but it did expire.
So is he.
Well.
Are we allowed to consider the same application before a year has elapsed?
No, well, I mean, that would kick us into the same factors of if there's been a mistake of law. I mean, that's.
I think Mike just, I mean, said that essentially that the variance is void. So to me, if it's void, then he can resubmit a new application.
Except for that our ordinance says you can't resubmit for a year.
Resubmit an existing or a new one?
Resubmit a new.
And I mean, I guess all I want to see is something in the ordinance that gives us, you know, some discretion. And I guess the situation that I am, I am just, is if he was here and he said, "I was going to, but then my grandmother got sick in Florida and I had to leave town for 60 days," but he's not here.
If you're watching at home.
But.
He's driving over now.
But having said all of that, we don't have that argument. If we table it, he could come back, but we don't have any, but there's no, we're not granted any discretion, it doesn't seem. I mean, there's nothing in the ordinance that says we have the discretion to consider a reapplication.
I mean, I'm pretty sure that on this board, we've had situations where variances of, approved variances have lapsed.
Yeah, but it's usually like three years later they come back. I mean, I think we did one last month, two months ago, when it was.
It was like five years or something.
Previous owners had been granted a variance.
And John, truth be told, this particular crystallization of knowledge did not arise with that. And this is new. I mean, this thinking as to the expiration of a variance and that the jurisdiction of the board is not, is no longer here. There's no application.
Yeah, I'm just troubled by, I mean, there's something logically that just, that isn't clicking in where, okay, the variance has lapsed, it's void, whatever the case may be. Okay, and what? Now you got to wait nine months to resubmit?
Well, it does allow for the board to consider a new appeal or application within the one-year period if the board determines that owing to a mistake of law or a misunderstanding of fact, an injustice was done. So who knows what he might say on that, but we don't have anything from him that says, "Oh, I thought that the 90 days ran from," who knows what he might say. We don't have anything. And that's part of why I would be inclined, if I had to decide now, to say, "I'm sorry. We don't have any reason to rehear this." And so I kind of prefer to table it, but.
So let's say in December, the variance was approved. Was he informed as to what he needed to do after that? And in what form was that? And was he represented by counsel or was he just?
He was not.
He was not, okay. So did he know exactly what he needed to do within 90 days?
There's usually a big, doesn't it say on the form, like, "You must record this within 90 days"?
Well, I'll tell you what happened. The day after the variance was approved, the contractor called Chumpin' at the Bit to get this permit and start the project. I said, "Okay." I gave the directions to the contractor. This is what needs to be done. Submit. And he came in, submitted the permit application. And I said, "You need to have the owner do this." So, you know, technically, was the owner made aware of this? He could argue that he wasn't. And that's because literally on Wednesday morning, I had a contractor on the counter wanting to start the project. And then I don't know what happened between him and his contractor. He still has the same contractor that wants to do the project. I think the contractor got sidetracked on a different project, forgot to tell him. But, I mean, they're still working together. But, you know, the contractor was sort of the middleman in that process because he was the one on Wednesday morning beating on the counter. I want to do, it was December, and he wanted to do his footings right before the ground was going to freeze. And so I said, "Okay, this is what you have to do. He has to record this. You come back in with that." And he disappeared. I moved on to bigger, better things. And next thing you know, 90 days is gone. I don't know if there were other extenuating circumstances, but, you know, Aaron asked the question, was he formally notified? And he was not formally notified by me.
Which it's not our obligation to do. We don't have any notification. I mean, it's the law.
You know, his authorized, his builder at that point was his authorized representative for the building project. And, you know, and he was made aware of that, so. If we move forward, you know, we can just flush out some clear direction.
So I cannot believe in the span of one meeting, we are referencing 1953E. I mean, it just blows me away. How does this happen?
Once we find something.
We just grab onto it and run with it.
If he was first, if he kept his first spot on the agenda with everybody, he's going to.
That's right. So if he comes back and there's not a mistake of law.
Or fact. He could have just made a mistake.
Yeah, but isn't that a, isn't that a.
What's his mistake? His mistake is he forgot to file the variance?
Isn't that a board mistake of law?
Or misunderstanding.
Isn't that the board, if it determines that owing to a mistake.
Or misunderstanding of fact, an injustice was done.
That's on behalf of our part. I don't think that's on.
That's on us, not on him.
I think that's.
Doesn't say that.
Doesn't say that.
I just, but if this is what, but if this is what we're hanging our hat on to, I don't know what we're doing, reapprove or to listen to the resubmission? I don't know. I'm just, I'm not sure that's going to carry, I mean, I'm not sure that's going to carry the debt. Because I mean.
But the thinking is if we're going to, if we want to give him a chance to make a presentation and argue before the board before just denying it because he didn't show up.
Yeah.
To a notice.
But is he, all right, but is he, so he shows up and we're going to say, you know, "Mr. Toothaker, by the way, you got to limit your discussion to whether we made a mistake of law or misunderstanding of, or misunderstanding of fact. Go." Right?
Right, yeah.
We don't care. We don't want to hear about the variance.
Another question, so if he comes back and we hear his arguments and choose to deny it, at that point, we're just restarting the clock for him again. He's losing six more months.
I don't think we are. I think it would be from the, under the December decision.
We would just be denying his request for a renewal or.
Renewed proceeding.
I will just state the obvious. It's seven months now, so the only, there's five to come.
And by then.
Then he'll know to.
He'll be racing again.
But, I mean, but, I mean, but, I mean, it was a contested request. There are, I mean, so there is more, there's more import to not allowing a renewal because it would be contested again. There's new board members. It may not go the same way. I mean, even though it's just another six months, it's just another six months before he has to go through the same thing. But, you know, that's, it is what it is. It's not our fault.
Does it make any sense to, table it, to table it?
I can go either way personally.
Does it make sense to table?
That's what you were saying, like, an hour ago.
No, it wasn't quite that bad. We're getting close. Does it make any sense to table it? And over the ensuing 30 days, table it and resubmit. I mean, you're resubmitting the application because it is void, is it not?
The variance is void, but I think he needs to make an argument that we're going to hear renewed proceedings if we table it.
Meaning, okay, is he, if we table it, is he resubmitting the application and focusing at least initially on whether there's a mistake of law or a misunderstanding? Okay, fine.
I think so.
But in the ensuing 30 days, we, maybe we put this to the town attorney and say, "Are you telling me this is the only escape? I mean, this is the only venue in which a void, a void variance can be presented, you know, re-presented back to the board as after one year? That's it?"
Yeah, I mean, I.
If it is, it is. I mean, if it is, it is. But I think that's a good idea because, I mean, frankly,
if there's something in the ordinance that would allow us, those who were here last December, to just hear him say, "Yeah, I mean, for whatever reasons I didn't get in, you know, can I have 90 more days? Yes." I mean, that would be what I would like to do if something allows us to do it. But I don't see it there right now.
I just want to make two points and I'll be more than happy to move along with the motion. And is that the application in December, it's over, it was approved. And so the variance is two steps, authority by the board and registration with the state or the courthouse. All right? You can't do one without the other. I think that's right. So here, we have no authority over an application that's currently before us. When I look at reapproval, I'm thinking, "How is that possible? How do we reapprove an application that has already been decided?" Because that's more like reconsideration. But part that, so if he failed to register, I see it as a void or it has expired. Your authority by the town to register your variance has expired. And then there is nothing there. There's no real property right held by the property owner at that time. So then they come back before the town, and what options do they have? Section 1953, which would be some sort of renewed proceedings option, or B, file a new application outside the one-year time period. That's the two options that I see. If I, I'd be happy to be staying corrected, but that's what I.
Right, I mean, those are the two options that I see also. But I mean, I think John's suggestion that the town council may be able to point us in a direction where we have some discretion outside of those two options.
Does this question, and no one may have the answer, but does the statute speak to this issue, I wonder? Because clearly, our ordinance isn't very clear, but.
I don't know if the ordinance isn't clear or it just doesn't, there's just nothing in the ordinance that applies to a renewal request.
Right, I guess, yeah, you're right. That's, I guess, that's, there's nothing specific to this situation, I guess.
So, Matt, you, or Matt, do you suggest that, that this agenda item, is it tabled or is it denied? In the way you're thinking through the.
It's an anomaly. It's in the words of Al Gore, it's an irregularity. I don't see how it could be on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
All right, so let's assume that there's some.
Pretend it's not there?
No, let's assume that there's some basis upon which it is there, because it is there, right? So I think the best option is to have a table in the intervening time, we express the applicant some concerns, have him come in and have a discussion because essentially, there is nothing for us to approve. There's no application before us.
How does the board express concerns to the applicant who's not?
That would be under the 53, 1953.
That he has to act under 53, 1953E, that there's no, there's no process for reapproval, is I think what you're saying. There's no, we don't have any authority to do that.
We would exercise a discretion to reconsider the application, which is the experience that we had earlier this evening, which is probably without comment. We say, "Sure, we reopen that application." And we hear it from the applicant. The entire board now votes. Recuse, recuse. You're not here, you're not here. But we need a quorum. It's not the four. Then it's, we're back into the procedure, the, into the realm that it's a live application. It's one of the board, a due notice, I guess, notice, and that the board has jurisdiction over that application.
So he will, his.
He would have a board.
Will be for reconsideration?
Renewal of proceedings.
Renewed proceedings?
And he'd have to express mistake of law, misunderstanding. I don't think he's available to make a mistake of law, but okay.
Okay. I mean, I still read that as the board's mistake of law or misunderstanding.
Yeah, I don't do that.
And we've already ruled in his favor, so I don't.
But we can argue on that.
Sure.
Down the, I mean, we're saying we don't have authority to do just some kind of reapproval thing. We need something under 1953E that allows us to proceed.
Because he can't, he can't do, we can't look at it until a year after December. But, or unless it's one of the exceptions, but what if we hang our hat on, change has taken place in some essential aspect of the case sufficient to warrant.
But the only thing I would say is if we're asking him to come back before the board and argue E, well, I'm not going to approve it. I would vote not to approve it under E because there's.
You don't know until you hear what he says. You don't know what he's going to say.
I guess, but I think that would be for the reconsideration, not for the actual variance itself. It would allow him to apply or allow us to hear an application within the one year. I think no matter what, he's got to do it.
But the only way we hear the application is if, is if this board is convinced, or he convinces us, that we, the board, some people don't agree with that, but I, this is my view, and yours too, that we, the board, somehow made a mistake of law or misunderstanding of fact in approving his application in the first part.
Or the third, or the third part where.
There's a change that has taken place in some essential aspect of the case sufficient to warrant reconsideration.
And that will be E.
And that would be what, the fact that.
The variance expired.
Well, who knows? But the point is, it would give him an opportunity to present his case on that. It would also give us, as you suggested, kind of an opportunity to talk to the attorney and be like, "What is this?"
Right, well, right.
The other thing that I want to make clear on that is that whoever does speak, the applicant, should recommend or suggest strongly that he provides a written submission because the board may not allow the person to speak once he arrives. Okay? So, I'll just leave it that, and if the person wishes to submit materials, that we'll be more than happy to consider it, okay?
Okay.
One, one point I want to make is, I'm reasonably certain that I've seen in other town ordinances, that this provision usually reads, after decision has been made by the board that is adverse to the applicant, a new appeal or application shall not be considered, which then opens the door to-
Since it wasn't-
Refiling for basically reconsideration if there was some kind of issue, like a recording problem or a time problem. So that's something that obviously, we don't get into, that's for the, for the ordinance committee, I suppose.
And this is usually reconsideration, too, not renewal.
Right.
There is a, there is a provision to, to grant an extension under 1954-
But that's for construction, right? That's for failure to complete construction within a year. Yeah, it's kind of notwithstanding the recording requirement, which is, interestingly, explicitly set forth in our ordinance, and he was supposed to give you the form of recording 10 days after he did it, too.
Correct. Okay.
Chair, I know that there's no one here, not even the applicant, we have just spent-
Yeah, I know, right.
Thirty minutes on a, something.
Something. Theoretical discussion.
Right, do we have a motion, or may I suggest a motion, or Joanna, do you have some thoughts on that particular point?
I would move to table consideration of a request for renewal of an application, or I guess I would just move to table Mr. Toothaker's request to our next meeting.
Do I have a second to table, do I have a second?
I have a second to that.
All in favor of tabling Mr. Toothaker's request till our next meeting? Seven, nine. So Mr. Toothaker's motion is tabled to our next, Mr. Toothaker's request is tabled to our next meeting.
Ben, will you follow up with the town attorney?
Yeah.
To kind of get some-
I don't think so, I don't, I don't see where, I don't see where it's warranted. For what?
To get some clarity about how that provision, 1953, whatever it is, five, applies.
E.
E, sorry.
Or if there is some other provision that, or angle that we're somehow missing as to how we can reprocess the avoided variance. I, I think we need some guidance.
Or let's just, let's just affir- It seems, I mean, it, it seems that it's, I, I, there's, there may be something that we are overlooking that would allow us to reapprove, just, you know, basically administratively say, yes, we approved you in December, you didn't get it within the 90 days, you have one more shot, and we haven't found that in the ordinance, it might be there, it can't hurt to ask town council if we're missing something.
And I'm curious about his thoughts about how that provision is meant to apply, if he has any insight into whether that, what kind of mistake that's supposed to be, is it a-
Right.
-or mistake, is it any mistake, is it?
Yeah.
What is it? What's the standard?
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Anybody second it? All in favor? Seven, nothing. We're adjourned.
Thank you.